...of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present with the exception of Councilman Claybaum. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is Item A, Approve Agenda as Submitted. B, Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining This Meeting. C, Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. D, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on October 3, 2022, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. E, Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $546,738.71. F, Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $71,184.26. G, Approval of Ambulance Bad Debts. H, Award of Bid for the Water Main Replacement Project as part of the 2021 Water SRF Projects to Myers Construction Incorporated in the Amount of $2,997... I beg your pardon. $2,997,447.47, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. I, Approval of Change Order 2, Increase in the Amount of $2,811.4 for the Water System Improvements Electrical Upgrades Project as part of the 2021 Water SRF Project to Philip Kirkowski Construction and Trenching Incorporated, as approved by the Board of Public Works. J, Resolution Number 6943, Entering Into a Statement of Work Agreement Between the City and Civic Plus LLC for Codification and Supplementation Services. K, Resolution Number 6944, Executing the Concession License Agreement Between the City of Beatrice and Girl Softball Association to License BGSA to Sell Food and Drinks Out of the Concession Stand at Hannibal Park. Item L, Resolution Number 6945, Forgiving 10% or $10,000 of the Original Principal Amount of the LB-840 Economic Development Loan to Hybrid Turkey's LLC. And finally, Item M, Resolution 6946, Adding the My Care Diabetes Support Program to the City's Health Insurance Plan for Its Full-Time Employees. Is there any item, any member of the City Council, once removed from the Consent Agenda?
L is in Lincoln. The Hybrid Turkey, L.
I beg your pardon?
L is in Lincoln.
Sure. Anyone else? Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, with the exception of L be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item L, be approved, accepted, or ratified. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0.
I move that Item L, listed under the Consent Agenda, be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss Item and Resolution 6945. Ted?
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a good deal. I just get from the material if that ends it with us, ends it with them. Do we have any more loans with them, or did they...
This is the fifth year.
What's that?
We have one loan with them. It was 10 years for forgiveness. We're in year five, and so obviously there's five more years. Every year they're in business, we forgive 10% of the loan.
It's almost done.
We're halfway.
Okay. Is it?
All right. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6545 has been passed and approved. Next is a public hearing to receive the Semiannual Report of the Citizens Advisory Review Committee as provided by the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, RRS 1943. Tobias?
Yes, so usually one of the members of the CARC is here, however, he ended up with a sick individual at his house, so he is not here, and I will give the report for them. The CARC oversees our LB-840 program that we have outstanding here at the City Beatrice. As of August 31st, we had about $572,000 in cash available in that fund. We had 10 loans that were outstanding. All those loans were current, and people are making their payments back to us. Some are as short as a year, some are up to 10 years long in varying degrees there. Since August 31st, we've had the sale of some real estate, so I brought in additional $200,000 into that account. We also made the loan to Mama Bear for the house there on Ninth and... Ninth and Monroe Street. That would be about $100,000 there going out. So things are going well on the LB-840 side of things on the CBG Fund. Again, we have some revolving loan funds there. We have the same committee oversee those funds. We have about $70,000 in cash available in that fund itself. We have one loan. If you recall, the state's asking us to close this loan fund out, and so as they make their payments back in, we're using those funds to do sidewalk repairs, things like that in the downtown areas, what we've used so far. So that is the state of things at the CARC.
Questions? This side? Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM. Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next is Resolution Number 6947, Authorizing the Purchase of a 2023 Freightliner Garbage Truck for the Purchase Price of $187,100, and Financing Said Garbage Truck for a Term of Five Years Through Security First Bank.
I move that Resolution Number 6947 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6947 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
As we discussed the budget, we talked about how getting the sanitation department's additional machinery down there. One, we talked about getting a new garbage truck and having that one financed. And so what I have before you tonight is a resolution to enter into that agreement. As you see, the purchase price is $187,100. Interest rate's 3.49%. It's a five-year loan, so annual payments count to be about $41,428. First payment's due in a year from today. The truck will be here relatively shortly, assuming you guys approve of this tonight, and they'll start running that machine. I'm not sure if it'll be in town or out of town, but they'll start running it in the routes.
Joe, is it a rear loader?
It'll be a... Yes, a rear loader machine. Yes.
Is it replacing, or are we adding?
No, we're replacing. We had some old equipment that we were still running down there. We're looking to get that stuff out and bring in some new equipment. And if you recall, during the budget season, we talked about how the repairs were kind of getting larger, some of those vehicles, and so we're looking to get some of those older vehicles off and get some new vehicles back in.
Yes, sir. Toby, what type of chassis is that on? Is it...
I do not know the answer to that one off the top of my head.
Okay.
Looks like a Freightliner.
If we had a place down here that could repair them...
Lincoln's got a place up in Lincoln that they'll... Yes, that's where we take those types of vehicles, and they've got people up there who can work on them.
Are you still looking at leasing a truck, too?
So this one will be that lease, if you will. We'll finance it that way, and then, assuming things work the way we have budgeted, we'll look for a second vehicle sometime later in this fiscal year.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? All right, seeing none, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 6948 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6949, Executing a Service Agreement Retaining RO Yoker Incorporated to Conduct a Conditional Assessment. I beg your pardon.
Skip this one.
Oh, beg your pardon. The Broncos are playing tonight. Next is Resolution Number 6948, Entering Into a Lease with Shawnoise Properties LLC for the Purpose of Using a Portion of City-Owned Right-of-Way for a Staircase.
I move that Resolution Number 6948 be passed and adopted. Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6948 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So Shawnoise are part of the downtown revitalization grants. As you guys have, you know, approved that particular loan to them, as they were working through their process, they went down to get a billing permit, and at that point, it was realized that they would be building on city right-of-way. And so tonight, you have a lease agreement, like we've done with several other properties around there. This one's for a four-foot by 75-foot portion of the right-of-way adjacent to the east side of their building. It's a one-year loan, or, excuse me, one-year lease agreement that renews automatically unless either party gets notice. It's for a dollar a year. It allows them to build the staircase, and it gives second-floor access, fire exit to their second floor. Outside of that, there is still plenty of room there to meet ADA requirements on the sidewalk.
Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Which resolution is it? 6948 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6949, Executing a Service Agreement Retaining RO Yoker Incorporated to Conduct a Conditional Assessment of the Mechanical Equipment, Electrical Panels and Equipment, Plumbing and Building Located at 105 North Sixth Street.
I move that Resolution Number 6949 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6949 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
105 North Sixth Street is probably more commonly known as the Kissington, is what most people know it as. Everybody's well aware what that building is for our downtown. Obviously, the city's very interested in seeing that building. It can continue to be a viable building in our downtown, and so we're working with Age Mark here, who are the owners of that property. The assessment itself is an $8,000 invoice. Age Mark has agreed to pay for one half of that. And again, Yoker will come in and look at the structural integrity of the building. They'll look at those mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, type of those, and give us an assessment of how that building is, so we can continue to look to see how we can make that building viable moving forward.
So does that report become our property, or theirs?
Ours. We are the ones retaining the structural engineer.
All right.
Questions?
We got any nibbles on that?
What's that?
We got any nibbles on any...
I think there has been some folks, at least a couple of them, interested in it through Main Street. They're talking to Michael.
Good. Good.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, and your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 6949 has been passed and adopted. Next is Item D, Resolution Number 6950, Executing the First Amendment to the Loan Agreement, NDEE Project Number D31674, between the City and NDEE, to Change the Requirement of a 50-Year Wellhead Protection Area to a 20-Year Wellhead Protection Area.
I move that Resolution Number 6950 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6950 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So we've talked a lot about our SRF loan agreement that we did with the state. We use those dollars in our water department to make improvements to the water distribution system. The initial loan agreement that the state sent down to us required us to adopt a 50-year wellhead protection area. We have a 20-year wellhead protection area today. We started kind of going down that path. We had some public hearings. What we heard from the property owners out there was obviously their concern about going to a 50-year wellhead protection area. We weren't working with the county on their rules and regulations that they have, which is the 20-year regulations. And so we went back to the state and said, can we amend this and take it from a 50-year down to a 20-year wellhead protection agreement? The state has agreed to do that. The law, the amendment you have before you tonight does just that. It takes out the 50-year wellhead protection area and replaces with a 20-year wellhead protection area.
So it actually shrinks it?
It shrinks it.
Questions, gentlemen? Gentlemen? From the audience. If you'd come up, state your name and address, please.
Ashley Mason, 1300 Lincoln Street. When were the dates of those public hearings?
I do not recall off the top of my head. We had one, the library, no, in July, maybe? I don't have to go back and look. I don't remember exactly when those meetings were off the top of my head.
And were the residents around that area notified by mail?
Yes, they were.
For the public hearings specifically, or just that the wellhead would be changing?
My understanding is they were notified of both the hearing, because there were members that were at that meeting.
Community members were at that meeting?
Hmm.
And you had one public hearing?
We had two.
Two. How many people do you think came from the public for both of those?
I don't remember.
Did any of the City Council members attend that they would remember?
I don't know.
So you're all going to vote on some people that didn't attend to hear from the public when they spoke? Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 6950 has been passed and approved. Next is Resolution Number 6951, Declaring the Beatrice Airport Authority's Corporate Existence Ceased on or About June 1, 2022.
I move that Resolution Number 6951 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6951 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So airport authorities are something that's created by state statutes. They originate here at the City Council. We initiated ours in 1963. State statute says they exist for 20 years or as long as they have debt. Our airport authority did not have debt in honor about June 1 of this year, and so by law, they no longer existed. And so we have kind of a couple of different steps here tonight, but the first one was this resolution. We thought it was quite a good idea to have the resolution, just to put a roadmap out there, so as you look back in sometime in the future, you can kind of see how we ended up with an advisory board. And so that is what the intention of this resolution is.
Mr. Kerr? And that advisory board will be responsible for the debt, or...
They'll oversee the operations of the airport, just like your library advisory board today, just like the Board of Public Works, those type of things.
And it'll be an appointed board? Okay. All righty.
They can't ever go back.
Not unless this board so chooses.
This is all success. Yep. I had somebody ask, and I said, I don't think so.
They could.
But I wasn't aware of the statute, so, all right.
And will the board kind of be appointed based on the past elections, on where the term is? Is that kind of the plan?
That's the plan, anyway. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Will those appointees come in front of us, or will it be like mayor appointee?
Just like all the other boards, it'll be mayor appoint, City Council confirm.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Ashley?
Can you repeat the name and address again?
No.
I'm not used to so many opportunities to come up and speak before you guys. So with the election coming up and you guys now terminating that board, there are people who don't serve on that board who are running for those positions.
We're actually not terminating the board.
You're downgrading them to appointees?
Going from an airport authority board to an advisory board. Yes.
Well, an airport authority board is elected by the public, and now you're moving them to an advisory position where you're appointing them.
Well, it was more of an automatic statutory nonexistence.
Right, I grasp that concept, but my bigger question is, you just stated that you're going to appoint people based off of their previous terms. Are you also going to consider those who are running for those positions in the upcoming election?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution 6951 has been passed and adopted. Next is Ordinance Amending Article 2, Chapter 6, Section 6 through 16, through Section 6 to... Through 23 inclusive, and Adding Section 6 through 24, through Sections 6 through 29 inclusive, to Create the Office of Airport Manager and the Beatrice Airport Advisory Board.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-37. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number 22-37. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 22-37 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-37 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-37 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-37 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance Number 22-37 be passed and approved. Discussion?
As we just discussed, this ordinance creates the Beatrice Airport Advisory Board. It's a five-year, five-member board. They're elected or appointed to five-year terms. Generally, what we do is then we stagger them till one person rolls off every year. When the first appointments come up, there'll be... Somebody will have a five-year term, so maybe four, et cetera, so we can roll through those. It's very similar to the airport, or, excuse me, the library advisory board that we just created here a year ago or so. It's a very similar ordinance to that one. What it also does is it creates the position of airport manager, and so that position becomes a department head, just like all the other city department heads, and they're treated or follow under the Non-Union Employee Handbook.
Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 22-37 has been passed and approved. Next is Resolution Number 6952, Appointing Dennis Schmidt as the Airport Manager.
I move that Resolution Number 6952 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6952 be passed and adopted.
Dennis has been working with us now for about three months. He was hired on by the Airport Authority Board to replace Diana, and so with this transaction we've gone through tonight, we've brought him back tonight to have him be appointed to be a department head and the airport manager.
Couple of weeks ago, you met Dennis. He is here tonight, if you have any other questions of him. All right. Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6952 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance conveying real estate owned by the city to 3FI LLC.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-38. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number 22-38. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 22-38 by number the first time, ordinance 22-38 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-38 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-38 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance Number 22-38 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So we have reached an agreement with BLI LLC for the purchase of the JCPenney's building. Purchase price will be $5,000. In addition to that, they're not asking for any LB-40 dollars, they're not asking for any TIF dollars, they're not asking for any CBG revolving loan funds, they're not asking for any other dollars from the City Beatrice. The way that the transaction is structured is that they will go in, they will clean out the interior of that building, which we estimate to be between $20,000 and $30,000 to clean out the inside of that building. Once that's done, they will have a structural engineer come in, they'll do an inspection of that building. If everything checks out there, they'll proceed with closing. The transaction's sometime in December. If for some reason there are some structural deficiencies in that building, depending on severity of those deficiencies, then we would sit back down and have some more additional conversations about moving forward the purchase of the building itself. But that's the nature of the purchase of the JCPenney's building.
Jerry?
Do we have to reimburse them for their clean out if they don't?
No, sir.
No.
That's a freebie.
What's that?
That's a freebie. That's something we'd have to pay to do.
Correct.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. I beg your pardon. Yes, sir, come on up. Your name and address, sir?
Name is Aaron Shown. I live at 17323 East Hackberry Road in Philly. However, I own the property at 518 Ella, 516 Ella, and apartments above. I'm the other one that had the offer in for the JCPenney building. I got a few questions. What is the other parts of the agreement that I've heard rumors of that the... All their city roofing contracts would be going to the 3P or 3FI contracting company?
That is our next item on the agenda.
Am I a little too early?
Just a little too early.
Okay.
Because what we're talking about is transferring the ownership of the real estate.
Correct.
Right.
And I'm...
It's the next item on the agenda. You can stay set there if you want.
Okay.
Okay? All right. All right, any other...
This is my first meeting, sorry.
What's that?
This is my first meeting, sorry. I'm trying to figure it out.
It's not a problem. Anyone else regarding the transfer of the real estate? All right. And your vote, please. And that is approved 6-1, with Councilman Fairbanks voting no. Ordinance Number 22-38 has been passed and approved. Now, Mr. Shown, Resolution Number 6953, Executing an Agreement to Transfer City-Owned Property, Commonly Known as 517 to 519 Court Street, to 3FI LLC, and Outlining the Repair of Storm Damages from the June 11, 2022 hailstorm to City-Owned Property to Be Completed by 3FI LLC.
I move that Resolution Number 6953 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution Number 6953 be passed and adopted. Well, first let Tobias explain.
So this agreement does include the repairs of the various city buildings that were damaged in the June storm of last year. We end up with about 44 buildings that incurred damage on them. The company will start in the spring. Obviously, through the winter months, we'll be acquiring materials, that kind of stuff, look to start in the spring, making repairs. The cost to the city is for the insurance proceeds. We talked to a number of other contractors. That was the same price we're getting for anybody else, was do it for the insurance proceeds. We obviously have our deductible, but we have a deductible buy-down policy as well, so it limits the city's out-of-pocket expenses on this. What other questions you might have after this particular transaction?
Any comments, gentlemen? All right, Mr. Shown?
Well, I got a few questions on that. I understand...
Okay.
I understand you guys are elected to do the best interest of the city, and I expect you to do the best interest for the city at the time that we vote. However, I got a few questions. What would be the purpose of the building that they're planning on doing? For when they remodel it, what is their purpose?
I think for retail, but it could change depending upon what the... What the owners actually decide to do with it. But that's the plan, anyway.
Okay.
As it was, you know, the information that was given to us, that's the plan.
So basically, I want to point out, there's 23 vacant retail locations just on Court Street. Is it really in the best interest of the city just to add another retail location in town that is going to either need to be rented out? Because if you look, what you guys are trying to do is give all the roofing contracts to a company that didn't exist on Thursday of last week. This company just filed for their LLC Friday. Do we know who's going to be doing the roofing itself? Because the address to that comes back to Johnny's Welding. And as far as I know, Johnny's Welding does not do any roofing.
So the individuals that are involved is a roofing company and an individual that is part owner of Johnny's Welding, yes?
Are we entitled to know if it's a local roofing company, or is it an out-of-town roofing company?
It's a...
Crowns? Yeah, a little of both.
And they're out of Lincoln, correct?
I think their office is in Lincoln, but they have owners here as well.
Okay. So why wouldn't you hire a local company? And the reason I'm saying this is, per our, I had a conversation with Tobias here, oh, probably three weeks ago. And I asked him about my offer versus somebody else putting in an offer. And per our conversation, he told me he would get ahold of me and talk to me about a counter offer, which did never happen. I've never been contacted, referenced the counter offer. And, you know, if I'd have known that all these buildings are in play, I've been in construction business for at least ten years, if not more, if you consider my job prior to what I was doing before. So, I mean, I could easily do the roofs for that as part of the deal, because five thousand ain't nothing for that building. And my plans on that building are not retail. I want to make something that will actually bring people to town. I want to put in like a lost-in-fun, like Dave and Buster's, where you can go and have fun. Right now, there's eleven hundred college kids out there. You know what they do for fun on the weekends? They go out to Walmart and walk around. So that's kind of sad. We can't capitalize on that. If we want to put another retail in there, it's just going to be something that possibly fails along with the other twenty-three vacant spots in town. Let's see. Obviously, I stated my name, Aaron Schoen. I actually helped my brother start his roofing company. I've been doing roofs on my own in the past also. So I'd be more than qualified to put in a same offer as them, if not even sweeten the deal by offering six thousand for the building. I think it's only fair because I put the offer in first. And the reason I say that is I also put interest in on the three-two-three building, the Cook Building there in Beatrice here. And at that point in time, I was told that the Hidos had put in interest first, and I wasn't allowed to put an offer in for the fact that they'd been working with them and I, I wasn't even allowed to put an offer in. So at that point, I said, okay. To one of the city guys, I go, okay, here's the deal. If you want to play that way, I want interest in that J.C. Penney building. And I said that the day you guys sold that property for three-two-three, which is months prior to you even having that building and your guys' ownership. So I don't know. I kind of think it's fair, if you're playing one way, one rule, you should at least consider what's best for the public. My first actual building proposal was emailed on nine seven of this last month, which at that point, that was when I knew exactly what to go about, because I had a meeting with Tobias to see what I needed to do. Because I'm new to this, honestly. But right now, we run Wicked Good Foods, which is a successful freeze-dried business right now. And I've been running AKC Homes and Renovations for the last five years here in town. And I've increased the property values on five or six properties here in town drastically. I actually even sold the house for most single-family residences ever sold in the town of Beatrice. So I think it's only fair that I get the shot to put a counter offer in to at least meet the same thing as the other owner, because why go with a company that just formed versus a company that's here in town that has done probably numerous ones of your guys' roofs already? You already know their quality of work. You know that they got a ten-year workmanship warranty. They're here in town, they're not going anywhere. Why go buy another company that's out of town? I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Aaron. Anyone else?
Stan.
Yes, sir. Ted, sorry.
So I'm going to be a no vote on this. I wasn't worried of anything Mr. Schoen just said, but I like the end result of this. I don't like the process that we followed during this. And I say "we" collectively, because I'm part of the council. So I just think that this should have been two separate entities. I think the sale of the building should have been one, and the roofing contract should have been another. Everything being equal, this, what this looks, what this appears to me, and what, it's just in my opinion, it turns out to be basically a no-bid contract for a substantial amount of work. So if, if everybody would have had, if this company still would have been interested in the building after they bid on the roofing projects, and they had come to us and said, not only are we going to, not only, if you give us the contracts, we're going to have enough, you know, we'll be able to buy this building, I would, I would have said, okay, that puts the thumb on the scale to give the contracts to you, because it's all the same. I mean, if every, if you had ten different contractors and they're all going to bid for what the insurance companies are going to do, and then they came and said, but we're going to take this problem off of your hands, because it is a problem. That would have given credence to that, and be able to put the thumb on the scale for them. But as, as it sets, I think this should have been two separate things. I don't think we did our due diligence on it. It doesn't feel, seem transparent to me, so I'm a no vote on it tonight.
Stan? Mr. Kerr?
Toby, can you tell me why Mr. Schoen's bid was not, or did you consider it over these guys and why these guys got the bid? I was only aware of this bid. I was not aware of Mr. Schoen's bid.
We've talked to a couple of other individuals who made offers on that building. Everybody who made an offer on that building won the building at one dollar. And then we're also asking for LBA forty funds, TIF financing, and CBG revolving loan funds in addition to the building for free.
Was Mr. Schoen asking for any of those?
Yes.
You were asking for LBA forty and stuff?
Yes, I was, but I had no idea roofing was playing into something like this. And that building belongs to the city, therefore you get hail damage for the roof, you're getting insurance for that. But you get that, they essentially get to put the roof on, so they didn't put the brand-new roof. All they got to do is now remodel it.
We don't, we don't get hail damage for the J.C. Penney's building.
You get to come up.
It isn't.
And just an additional note to the council, part of the consideration for this is the amount of repairs that the approved bidder is going to do with, without asking for LBA forty funds, without asking for TIF finance. This is part of their deal. They're taking on quite a lot in cleaning out this building for the city at no cost to the city, no other dollars spent.
Toby, he said he came back to you and you didn't get back to him. Is this?
I've talked to Aaron a couple of times about the particular building. You know, at that point, the council was looking to negotiate this direction.
And that was about three weeks ago, I made that last visit with him. And I asked him about, I hear there's a second offer. I was like, I would like another crack, because, you know, if you have a house you're trying to buy...
Stan, he needs to come up.
Yeah, he needs to come up.
You need to come up here, Aaron. Sorry.
Can't do it back and forth out of the audience. That's going to cause a problem.
So basically, if you got a house you're buying, and you put in two offers, they're going to ask them, hey, do you want to come up some? Because the, their realtor is working in the best interest of that person that they're selling that house for. So that's why I was like, okay, I'm just throwing it out there, because I've never done this before. So I was like, talking to him, kind of trying to figure out, and when I say him, sorry, Tobias, I was talking to Tobias, I was like, so what do I got to do? And see, so how I based my offer was, I thought, you know, we needed a new roof. So the city was going to probably be having to put a new roof on the thing anyway to get rid of it. I based it on, I had to do a lot of cleanup, and there's mold in there. So you'd have to do mold renovation, you know, part of the, taking the mold out. The city, he told me, had a grant to remove the asbestos. So I put that in there, since he said, the city has a grant to do it, you might as well use it. So I put that part of, the city would remove the asbestos for the fact that they got a grant to do that. I also was told that they're going to be refixing the sidewalks no matter what, so I put that in there. The city was responsible for fixing the sidewalks. Also, another thing I put on my first, you know, asked, or my first guess of what to put as an offer, was the city waived the clean-out fees, because I figured they do that for three-two-three building with the Hidos. Why not for me? If, you know, you're doing it for one, you might as well do it for everyone. And then the last offer, I did ask for roughly a two-hundred thousand forgivable loan, based on the fact that I'd put a viable business in there within five years, not at five years, but within five years. And I just put it, because you know how stuff is, sometimes it's hard to get appliances or equipment and stuff like that. So that was pretty much what my offer was. I don't have it exactly in front of me right at this time, but I believe that was about everything in it. But then again, like I say, I asked, what do I do, since there's a counter offer? And then he told me I was going to be able to put in a counter once, you know, it was decided or talked about.
Any other questions, gentlemen? From the audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved five to two, with councilmen Fairbanks and Kerr voting no. Resolution sixty-nine fifty-three has been passed and adopted. Next is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action can be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Yes, sir. Come on up. Name and address, sir?
My name is Bill Weicher. I reside at nine oh two North Eighth here in Beatrice. And the reason that I'm here tonight is to talk on behalf of most of our neighborhood. We would like to express concerns regarding the house at nine oh three North Ninth. There's a flyer at the Indian Creek Mall advertising for men in recovery to rent the house at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per week. And from what we understand, the house can accommodate for anywhere from six up to eighteen people, depending on the square footage of the property. Our concern is for the safety of over thirty kids in our neighborhood, and also what impact it may present to our property values. Zoning concerns are the main reason we are here tonight. And from the research we have done, it looks like we are in R3, which states in the zoning ordinance, Article Two, Definitions Line Item Number Two oh nine, number one is family, that one or more persons living together or sharing common living, sleeping, cooking, and eating facilities within an individual housing unit, no more than three of whom may be unrelated. The other concern is if the company is licensed to have the facility that can accommodate that many men in recovery. The flyer states eighty-seven percent success rate, but our concern is the other thirteen who may not make it. We're on board with recovery. We get that. We understand that. But the location, we feel, is very poor for the children in our neighborhood. The Gage County Assessor lists the house as in property class as a single-family dwelling. And I have, I have a copy of the flyer that was at the, at the mall. And also have from the Gage County Assessor where it says here, its property class is There are plenty of stores that offer alcohol within just a few blocks of the house, and it would be very inviting for relapse to occur. The other concern is that no one in the neighborhood was aware that this was even going to take place. It just, all of a sudden, we had to stumble across it. And that was pretty concerning to us. We were completely caught off-guard. In conclusion, we are asking to get on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Okay, Bill. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Are you speaking for all of them, Bill?
Excuse me?
You're speaking for all these folks?
Most of them.
Okay, perfect. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Did I break something?
Don't think so.
My name is Christopher Newman at eight seventeen North Ninth Street. Talking about the same house of nine oh three North Ninth. I have a three-month-year-old, a three-month-old at my house, and having that type of environment nearby, I wouldn't want my child exposed to this type of stuff. And I did some research and like, looking at, like, they say they're going to provide a drug-free environment. Well, prison's supposed to do that, and only last year, the state penitentiary up in Lincoln has had plenty of paraphernalia found. Then on recidivism rates, I found one in Pennsylvania, at Philadelphia, had it set for recidivism for halfway homes, had sixty-eight percent, while just recovering through normal prison, sixty-one percent. So that, I don't know where that person got his eighty-seven percent recovery rate. It's probably something we should figure out where he made that number, or where that claim comes from. That doesn't make any sense to me. But it's just, we also have a foster home just south of us, and they're supposed to provide a safe environment. That that house could have people that could possibly, it might not be like eighty percent, ninety percent, whatever it could be, but it just takes one to mess up a lot of stuff. And having high-risk children being in foster care would not be good for them. That's what I have to say on that issue.
Chris, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Joshua Leesberg. I reside at two oh three Shugart. I want to state on some of the stuff that people said. So first, these houses are a bunch of men living together, help with recovery and stay clean, and they are protected by the Fair Housing Act, and it does prevent from all discrimination. I do want to say that first. Second, they've talked about the success rate of these sober living houses, let's say eighty-seven percent, fifty percent, but I can guarantee you, if these houses ain't there, a hundred percent of them are going to go cause mischief in the neighborhood. That's what these houses are there to protect at. They are drug-free. We have, there's zero tolerance for drug-free, zero tolerance for violence. They are supposed to hold jobs. They're supposed to be active in the community. I was an addict for seventeen years. I went to prison, I've been sober two and a half years, and I went to a sober living house. It was in Lincoln, you know, and I think it's time that we acknowledge Gage County does have a drug problem. We need to do something about it. You know, I'm sorry it's in their neighborhood, but it's got to be somewhere, you know, and they're much needed, you know, and, yeah, I don't even know where to begin. Just that they provide so much. You know, Oxford Houses have over thirty-five hundred facilities in the U.S. You know, they're well-established, and some of these guys talk about, they're worried about their neighborhood, you know, over on Ninth Street. A lot of you ain't aware, a year ago this month, I helped open a sober living house on Ninth and Lincoln. It's been there a year. There's been no complaints of it. You guys didn't even know about it. With the police department, with the city board, no complaints. They are well-run. They are well-monitored. And we've had a very successful rate. You know, it's been there a year this month. Their neighborhood, in their neighborhood, and they didn't even know it. You know, so they are effective, you know, and, you know, people look at addiction as something horrible. Yes, it is. But with these houses, you can recover from it, and that's what we need. Because if we don't start getting stuff like this, we're going to be Lincoln in five years. It's a simple fact. You know, we're getting worse and worse. You see more drug violence, all that. Well, because some of these young men have no accountability. They have nobody to look, look up to, they have nobody to make sure they have jobs, you know, so we are in desperate need of it. You know, and I'm very engaged in my community now. I've spoken at Blue Valley Mental Health. Yeah, I've worked with young kids, I work with older guys, you know, and a lot of my sobriety is due to sober living houses. And I guarantee you, if I didn't have that, I'd still be running these streets, causing chaos, you know, because I had no direction. You know, and I get it, parents have a right to be concerned. They really do. As parents, you should be. But I think most of the concern is because the unknown. You don't know enough about these facilities, you know, and I'm willing to talk to any of them who have questions or have concerns. You know, I'm willing to give them some insight of what they actually do and what they can I think that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Anyone else? Miss Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Hicks, and we just moved here from California. And we reside at eight twenty-three North Ninth Street. And my concern is about the same thing. We left California for the reason that there was a lot of crime going on. And it got really bad, so we decided to find some place that we would call our home. And we were very pleased with finding this place. You guys have been very nice here. And we're just really scared, because when we heard that this was happening, we're like, why? We left California... We left California for that reason. So we really want to be safe, and we live too close. So I'm really concerned about it.
Thanks, Tracy. Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Jenny Swarthout. I reside at 527 Irving Street. And I came to talk on behalf of the new sober house that's coming to Beatrice or hoping to come. I guess for me, more than anything, it's just to put some fears at ease because it is a fear of the unknown. I'm an addict in recovery, and I'm just over 12 years. I've experienced a lot of interaction with addicts on a weekly, almost daily basis. Unfortunately, there's a stigma attached to them if you're not aware or not familiar or maybe don't have a family or friend that has dealt with that, that they are scary. And that's sad that we're considered maybe dangerous or maybe more dangerous than anybody else. But in reference to the Oxford House that's coming, which is the name of the one, now the one on Lincoln Street currently is not an Oxford House, but same concept, you know, same rules. Again, has been here for a year. And actually, just this evening, I reached out to one of our local law enforcement, just to curiosity, wondered if they get many law enforcement calls there. His response to me was, great tactic. Unfortunately, I have no info on the current sober house. I didn't even know where it was at. And that's one of our local police officers, just to put at ease or to, I guess, for the residents that live there. I understand their concern. I couldn't, had I not walked through what I've walked through and been associated with so many people who've walked through that, I would probably fear those things, too. I know the good side of those, and I know that there's a struggling side, too, is with any human being, not just a drug addict or an alcoholic. So I said, well, I will share that because that's pretty good information that a police officer here in town wasn't aware of the sober house or its location, meaning that they probably have never been called for trouble there. I can't really speak on behalf of the Oxford House without the gentleman here that's opening it. I can tell you there's 63 locations in Nebraska alone. I know Josh had shared, there's 3,500 probably nationwide. Many of her in Lincoln and Omaha. I do have addresses and locations of all of those. I guess, I guess what I would want to share with people is that these people are already in your neighborhoods, and you maybe don't know it because they're not in a labeled home or it's not maybe made known. And I get that. I understand that. And again, I understand the concerns. I guess I'm just here to more educate that they don't have to be afraid. I sat here 10 years ago, roughly 10 years ago, when Adult Women in Teen Challenge wanted to come to Beatrice. And there was a lot of people against that. And there was neighbors that were against that in fear of their kids, in fear, and this was a woman's home. Not that it should be much different, but it was. They were feared their cars may get stolen or their houses may get vandalized or robbed. I think that anybody that's been involved with Teen Challenge or has any idea of anything about them knows what a huge asset they've been to our community. Absolutely amazing. The success stories that have come out of there have been remarkable. So I guess I go back to that, stating that I came to support that at that time. And I knew what a need it was for our community. As any community, it's not just Beatrice. But we don't have a lot of options. You know, sober living, like, like Josh said, a lot of people, men or women, home isn't always a safe place for them to go back to, or maybe where they're from, or maybe their living environment. You know, these sober houses are places they can go, I guess, in the process of getting back on their feet and on their own. And they are productive members of society, and they have jobs. It's not like they're living there, wondering what kind of havoc they can wreak on the neighborhood, you know, or, or, you know, what kind of trouble they can get into. I will tell you, and I know from experience, and I run NA meetings here weekly, the people that don't want to get better or be better are not going to stick around the sober house. They're going to split. They're going to go back to their old playgrounds, playmates. They're not going to stick around the sober house to cause the neighborhood problems. It's just not how it goes. So I hope that, in knowing that, that we can just kind of spread awareness more and bring some education to people. And I would love to visit with people, too, if they have more questions like the Teen Challenge. You know, there's never been one issue where law enforcement has had to go there or somebody has left and caused problems for the community. If anything, they have brought our community amazing things with volunteer work and just everything they do, you know. And I will tell you that an Oxford House opened in Lincoln in February, and it was about a seven-month battle that the neighborhood fought. They even went so far as to spray paint things on the front of it that said, "No Oxford House here." Oxford House won, and they've been open since February, and the neighbors love them. They mow their yards, they trim their bushes, they pick up their sticks, they are always volunteering their time. I mean, these are good human beings. They're not there to hurt your children or to cause you problems. And I guess just, mine wasn't so much geared towards you guys, but more the community. And, you know, it's just if, like, it's a fear of the unknown, and I get that because we all deal with that if we're not aware of a situation or not familiar with it, and that's scary. But if we can, you know, come together and spread awareness or help educate people more that these are normal human beings with an illness. And chances are, if they're at a sober house, they're there to get better. They're not there, they're not forced there most often. They're there on their own free will. So I guess I just would like to ease people's minds a little bit, if possible, and, you know, insert questions if they have any. I'd be, they could reach me. I'm sure most people know where to reach me, but I'd be happy to be reached anytime, so. And the flyer actually isn't on display at the Indian Creek Mall. It just happened to be a flyer on my clipboard at work that somebody got, and somehow it died because I'm helping them find beds and furniture. So, anyway, but, so we're not advertising it, but I definitely would when it's time. So I guess, thank you for listening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Engage Quarterly Report. Rachel Crackmeyer is here, and she's going to make me move.
I think you'll be just...
Just sit really low.
Does everybody have a copy of the report I sent over? Okay. I do have a couple of additional copies if you need. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Couple highlights, I'll keep my presentation brief. Couple of highlights on some things that Engage has been doing over the last three months. We have sponsored and participated in Manufacturing Day, which is a local day to bring awareness to our local manufacturers and how important they are to our community's economy, what their issues and struggles are with workforce development, talent pipelines, things like that. So Manufacturing Day was developed to showcase these employers to area youth, and we had over 100 students participate in the day. It was a week and a half ago, approximately, and four schools, I actually had six schools signed up, and various issues happened that some had to withdraw out of that. We were looking to have about 160 students participate in that day, which is huge for our employers in the area. So what I'm going to show you now is another piece of highlighting our manufacturing industry in the area. This is a video that Digital Sky produced in conjunction with Engage to highlight one of our manufacturers.
Here at Engage, we're devoted to showcasing exactly what makes Gage County special. Between manufacturing, healthcare, technology, and the other industries which call southeastern Nebraska home, you'll find that our communities are overflowing with possibilities. Come see for yourself. Welcome to Opportunity Here. From all of us at Engage, we live it, you'll love it.
I think there's a mindset that manufacturing is a dark, scary, unsafe facilities that people might be working in. And right now, it's absolutely the opposite. If you come in, you'll see our facilities are ripe, clean, organized, safe, and are really using technology as an advancement for folks to learn new things and to explore ways that they can grow and develop their skills.
I'm Randy King. We own Kiddy Manufacturing, which has building in the gas, the contract fabricator. We're a contract metal fabricator. So essentially, what we do is we make parts for other companies that are then building full assemblies or making equipment.
I really enjoy the fast-paced challenges every day. I don't do the typical engineers that have to sit there all day.
It's always something different. Every day is fun, exciting. Some days are problematic, but that's been more fun. If you solve those problems, you make a good job.
Our main philosophy is we want to help you grow. So we're able to bring people in that, that don't have much experience in an industrial setting. We've got opportunities for students right out of high school. Essentially, we tell people that they need to be able to do three things. They need to be able to show up on time, they need to be able to communicate, and they need to be able to work as part of the team. And if you have those skills, we can bring you in and train you on everything that you need to do.
I wish, back when I was in high school, knew that there were jobs like this. Didn't necessarily have to go to college. I had the opportunity to go get a nice paying job where I could do something with my life and not have to go to school.
You know, we want to bring people in. We want to help them. We want them to stay in the community, be able to take care of their families, and we're able to support them in that.
The nice thing is, when they grow, you grow with them. It's very easy to find a hole that works for you. You know, if you were to go to a big corporation, you just have kind of another number.
As long as you're willing to learn something, they will teach you, and you can advance into the company as far as you want to go. Just learn how to read tape measures, the basic tools, and don't be afraid to get your hands dirty.
And that's it for this episode of Opportunity Here. From all of us at Engage, we live it, you'll love it.
Very good.
They did turn out fantastic. And there's several others, and we are working with Digital Sky to produce some additional ones in the future to highlight some other career industries as well. So with that, I've been working with the local public school systems outside of Beatrice as well, throughout the entire county, to look at what our workforce needs are, industry needs, and how we can partner with the local school systems, including our community college right here, to come up with innovative ways to get workers to our employers. They're struggling. They can produce more, but they don't have the people to do it. So we're looking at ways we can develop that talent pipeline. The other big item that I've been working on and not new to what you're hearing about is childcare. Childcare, as you probably know, is a massive struggle, not only in the state of Nebraska, but across the nation. In my report, if you have it with you, I included First Five Nebraska, which is an organization at the state level that kind of helps support childcare efforts. And they produce this bottom-line economic impact study. So what this shows is the economic impact that insufficient childcare has across the state. I'm working to, with First Five Nebraska, to develop a Gage County-specific report. Numbers are showing about a $10 million annual economic impact. So Gage County has about a 400-spot deficit. So we have over, around 400 kids that do not have access to quality childcare. So their parents aren't working, right? So how that kind of affects the economy, this bottom-line study shows exactly where those line items are and a dollar number attached to it. It's pretty insightful and kind of mind-blowing how much childcare really impacts people purchasing things, people working, growing that tax base for our employers, and so on and so forth. The state is nearly a $745 million loss. It's estimated that Gage County alone is around 10 million. So it really comes to the forehead of one of the biggest problems economically we need to address. Working with childcare providers, we have several that have expressed interest in expanding. Originally, I had shared that we have around half a dozen or so childcare providers that if they could have access to some additional funding, could increase their capacities. And we are looking at about 80 spots, just in those four providers, four to six providers. So a lot of work yet to be done. The grant application with the Crisita dollars that Engage had secured in the past, that application has since closed and will be reviewed for those that will be awarded funding. So we could see those capacity increases happening very soon. But there's still a lot of work to be done. So I would ask the city to, to help in those efforts and, and kind of educate the community as well on, on the shortage of childcare and what that means for our community and our county. And then to wrap up, we've just been continuing to work with community stakeholders across Beatrice and, and the county, of course, visiting with various businesses and getting ready to schedule BRE visits to make sure that we're assessing what business issues are and working to expand for those that are ready and able to do so.
Gentlemen, could you hold it down over there, please? Okay, Rachel, sorry.
No, thank you. So with that, that's all I have. Is there any questions from the council members?
Yeah. I just had a, oh, sorry. Just had a question on the childcare. Do you ever see the larger employers providing daycare on-site for families or going together to provide something like that?
In Gage County, Goldcrest is one of them that I could say is, is a dual-faceted center. Across the state, there are lots of examples. I've been able to attend a couple different conferences that have brought presenters in of various communities that have done exactly that. I will tell you, there are very small communities that have individuals, individual employers. One of them in north-central Nebraska is a farmer-rancher, and he identified it as a problem and an initiative he wanted to help with because his employees were not making it to work, or they were focused, they weren't focused on work at work because their kids didn't have adequate care type of thing. So there's definitely examples out there, and people are building things to be replicated because it's a problem everywhere.
Yeah, it is a problem.
Gary?
I watched all the videos when they were first available, and they're supposed to be awful high-quality. Were those ever offered before by Engage, or is this something you added?
No, they were actually developed when Trevor was here. We have had them edited and updated since. So you'd notice that Trevor's been removed from them. But they will, all of them, there's currently four of them living on the Engage website. All of them will be there, hopefully, within the next week or so. So yes, they are available on a YouTube channel as well to be downloaded and shared. The intent of those is to actually send them out to high schools so that teachers can utilize them in their classes to kind of talk to students about manufacturing and various industries.
Send them to trade schools, too, then?
Yep. Parents, I'll send them to whoever wants them, so.
Need to be shared on social media, then?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, that's part of the upcoming edits, is we're going to develop social media snippets of them as well. Great questions.
So, reference to childcare, have you had any conversations, not necessarily on-site, but any of the industries that are affected by it offsetting the costs directly to the daycares that provide for this, to, to help with that?
I'm working on that currently, scheduling meetings. I've made a few presentations at various groups, Rotary and things like that, to kind of bring the issue to the forefront. But we are getting ready to certainly, sitting down with some of those bigger industries and saying, what's your issue? What can we do to partner together to erase some of this deficit? It's not going to happen overnight. I mean, if you're all aware of, our biggest childcare center here is licensed for 150 children, we would need several of them to combat the deficit.
So the other question is, you've been here a while now. Have you got your staffing problems that you had when you got here? Have you got those alleviated, or do you have the staff all set now?
Staff is not 100% set, no. Kind of a one-man show with Aaron Jadwick still on contract as needed. But it is, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on, so I'm hoping to staff.
That was basically my question. I'm more concerned that you get someone on staff and get them off-contract as when needed because you need someone in-house.
You are right. I very much agree with you, yes. I'm working that as well.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That was it for me. Thanks, Tim.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, Rachel. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Next is our city administrators' monthly report. Tobias?
Yeah, just a couple of updates that are out there. If anybody drove by the fire station lately, you may have noticed some work going on down there. It's part of our backup dispatch center and getting it up and installed and running. And so you may have seen some guys down there on the tower, stuff like that today. That's what's going on there. Bridge rails, probably the most, I don't know, noticeable project going on right now. The guys are working along. They'll hopefully be done yet this week is what they're hoping for, if things continue to go well. But the street department, electric department are doing a good job getting those up and going. I think they're going to look nice when they're done. And then finally, I just want to update you on a few of the grants that we have out there that are currently pending. We've got grants out there for the Lincoln Street corridor, trying to get that project done. We've got grants for the street work down at 33rd and Lincoln Street. We've got Astro Park and a new playground there. We're working on that. The trail at 24th to 26 along the highway, 136, we still got a grant outstanding for that one. We're working on drainage studies in both Belvedere and for Tributary 44. We submitted those grant applications and just updated those in the last week. So there are a number of those type of grant funds we are out trying to pursue and see what we can bring back here.
The grant at 33rd and Lincoln, how much of that would cover the projected $4.9 million in road improvements to satisfy the needs of the school?
That particular grant would cover all of it. I mean, it's one of the large federal grants.
So let's just say we don't get that, and we have to fall back to the funds of the city. I know that several councilmen and yourself have... I know you've been trying to get a meeting together with the school board. Have we got any traction gained on that, on what we're going to do about addressing the city tax dollars going towards the improvement of the roads for the school that the city citizens of Beatrice were not supposed to pay a nickel for?
We've had some meetings with them, talking about the different issues that are going on out there, but we have not come to any type of understanding or agreement or gotten very far on the funding portion of those improvements.
Is it just they don't want to talk about it, or...?
I think part of it is they're trying to get the building and figure out what that cost is going to be so they know what those costs are going to be, so they know how they can move forward. And hopefully, maybe now they've got some more information, and maybe we can circle back and see if we can address those a little bit more.
I know it's in the one- and six-year plan that we approved, and it's only one year away, so they're going to have to giddy up here because I don't know about the other councilman, but I'm getting pretty tired of the phone calls of, "We're not supposed to pay a nickel this, and now you're going to take money out of our road fund." And they're all smart enough to understand that if we take it out of the road fund to pay for this, it's going to deteriorate these other roads longer down the road, which is going to cost us more money in the long run. So my suggestion would be that we expedite some sort of a conversation with the school board and get them in the same room and start discussing what we're going to do because I'm going to start sending up my phone calls to them because whether you're for the school or against the school, I don't care. It's the fact that it's going to rearrange all of our tax dollars that were arranged for city street projects we had projected before this.
And just a note, too, we've got between three to five different applications pending for federal grants for that whole corridor, along with the 136 reroute as well, too. So we've got a lot out there.
I'm just saying that...
It's a different issue you're bringing up, yes.
Grants don't always happen, so if they don't happen, what's Plan B?
Correct.
Okay, so as I read through the report, Tobias, and I should have left my laptop open to show, because maybe you can find it right away. Permits, you're at almost 200% of what you thought you were going to be at, and permits are nearing 2,000. I'm assuming those are building permits for roofs.
A lot of them are roofing permits. When I looked through the permit this month, I could not find the number for roofing permits I bill pick out in previous times, so I'd have to go back through and ask the...
I just saw the revenue was like 181% more than projected from the permit.
Yeah, permit revenue is up. The number of permits is up. I'd have to ask that department on a breakdown of which particular permits are. But roofing permits is a big reason.
Yeah, okay. So, and that's not a make-or-break thing. I mean, we're not making any money on the...
They're $75 apiece.
Yeah, I know. But still, you're getting 2,000 of them.
Right.
So it gets to be real money-ish. Not when you, you know, you've got a $40 million budget. For a $60 million budget, it's not, you know... That's... I just wondered if that's what that was.
Any other questions? Mr. Barnard?
I agree with Tim that the clock's been ticking on this road stuff out here, and I think we need to try to get together with the school board so we can have a meeting and...
And I think they just hired JEO, didn't they, to...
Did your traffic... Finish updating their traffic study.
Yeah, to figure out where the lanes are going to be and that kind of thing, so...
That's the next part of information we need to get.
Yeah.
Shouldn't that have been done when they designed the...
They did a preliminary traffic study, but you have to get the site plan worked out so you know where the entrances are going to be, so then you finalize the traffic plan to say if that's where the entrance is, here's how much of that road should be a three-lane versus a four-lane versus a two-lane. Where should the turn lanes be? Right turn lanes, left turn lanes? You got to finalize site plan first so you can finalize the traffic study.
Well, you know, unlike Tim, I've been having to get... And they're not night phone calls. And I just don't understand why, while they were figuring out the school, why they didn't figure the road in part of it? Did they just automatically think that we were going to take it over and do it?
You're asking the wrong people.
And I think that's what Tim and Gary and I are saying. I think that they need to come in here and talk to us, maybe in an executive session or something. I don't know. But from the way I'm getting the feeling is a lot of the councilmen are not really hepped up on putting that street in for them. They should have been figuring that out themselves. But it's like, you know, everything else, we're Big Brother to everything, so...
Okay, anybody else have a question, comment? All right. Next city council meeting is going to be on November 7th in these chambers and possibly have a work session on the 24th of this month. With that, Mr. McLean?
I move the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:17 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that the city council go into executive session at 8:17 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming.